Okay, well, I'm not too happy about it. Sorry, I started without even asking you. The regular meeting of the Iberia Parish School Board to be held at 5:30 PM on Wednesday, August 20th, 2025, in the Iberia Parish School Boardroom at the administrative building located at 1500 Jane Street, New Iberia, Louisiana. Call to order, let the Iberia Parish School Board meeting be called to order at 5:30 PM. Roll call, Ms. Gwen. Here.
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 And Maureen Revs, slippers.
Here.
Here. Thank you, Ms. Gwen. We're gonna have a moment of silence for Ms. Robin LeBlanc, cafeteria technician and student care aide at North Lewis Elementary, and Mr. Ovi Sunny Moss, retired AG teacher at New Iberia Senior High and career campus, followed by that be the prayer by Ms. Deborah and the pledge by Mr. Mayu. Please stand for a moment of silence.
Mr. Norris, we're so on the Hill family, David Hill and Jerry Dean Hill brothers passed just now.
You got it, Ms. Gwen?
Grant Hill.
Grant Hill. Amen. Ms. Savoie.
Well, we gather here today to do well for our children and all community for the school district. Please bow your heads and listen.
Mr. May.
Please face the flag with your hand over your heart and repeat after me.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Deborah and Mr. Mayu. Board members, don't forget to enter the meeting on your microphones. Public comment instructions. The requirement regarding public comment for a school board meeting is that a call for public comment must take place prior to each agenda item and vote on by the board. If you wish to comment on a, on an agenda item, please, during this meeting, please proceed as follows. Please fill out a card with your first and last name, the agenda item you wish to address. These requests to address the board regarding an agenda item will be heard prior to each agenda item as it's taken up. Any cards to be turned in? Seeing none. Moving on to presentations. B1, Group Health Plan, Financial Performance Update. Mr. Perez.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you all for allowing me to come here each month and provide you with an update. I'm looking forward to the time when I can give you some positive news. If you recall, during my update last month, I did warn you that July would be an ugly month because there were some large claims we were expecting. And as you will see with the handout that was placed in front of you, the numbers for July are probably the worst we've seen in the last 25 years. It's mainly due to two very large claims that hit in the month of July that combined amounted to $800,000. We did receive, as you will see, some of the stop-loss recovery in July, and we received most of the stop-loss recovery in August. So additionally, in, in August, and you'll see that when I, when I present my update next month, we also received over $100,000 of credit from the emergency room claims that were processed incorrectly. So August should be a different story because of all those credits. So, you know, I hope to report better news next month, but our, in June, you'll notice a modification that I made because the board did approve $1,225,000 of additional contributions. And Lauren advised me that that was made in the month of June. So I went back and I credited the total funding for June to reflect that total. That's why we are now showing a surplus in the month of June. So as it stands currently, our reserve position for the group health plan is a little over $7.4 million. That's not including interest. We probably have $900,000 of interest that has accumulated in that, in that reserve account. With my update next month, well, next month, my big focus is going to be your renewal. By then, I should have the full package for your renewal with, with recommendations. And that's renewal for both the commercial plan and the MAP, the Medicare Advantage Plan. And I anticipate there will be some changes recommended. And my concern now is the stop-loss. We've always, you know, stop-loss, the first year, the group went self-funded, your stop-loss premium was a little over $1 million. Then the second year, we were able to negotiate that down to about 825,000. Third year, we got it down. And then this year, the total combined premium is about 700,000. So in the scheme of things, it's a small part of your total cost. But with the stop-loss recovery that's been paid out, I anticipate it's gonna be more of a challenge this year. So we did several weeks ago, go to market to aggressively shop your stop-loss. So, you know, just want to give you a heads up that we may be recommending some changes with your stop-loss. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Perez?
Good way to put it.
Been waiting for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Thank you so much.
Agenda, B2, Monthly Sales Tax Report, Mr. Brody.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. President. Sales tax collections were $3,289,966.01, which is the figure in bold print on line nine, and the total remitted to the school board was $3,293,136.39. There are no questions, I can go right into my comparison report.
Hearing none. You may proceed.
Comparing July 2025 to July 2024, we are reporting a decrease of 4.48%. After looking through last year's numbers, there was a large one-time audit payment totaling around $263,000. If I were to take that payment out, we would have shown an increase of about 3.4%. And finally, we had increases from the following categories. Manufacturing was up 51%. Motor vehicles was up 51%. Convenience stores were up 39%. Machine shop and fabricators were up 34%. And hardware stores were up 16%.
Thank you, Mr. Brody. Any questions? Hearing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Moving on to B3, Tax Salary Supplement Report, Ms. Tennen.
Thank you, Mr. President. The cash balance on the 50% of the 3/4 cent sales tax salary supplement for July is $5,899,583.51. And the cash balance on the 90% of the half-cent sales tax salary supplement for July is $4,959,629.53. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Tennen. Consent Agenda. Any board member wish to remove a consent agenda item for discussion? Hearing none. C1, Progress Payments, Capital Improvements. C2, Financial Highlights. C3, Budget to Actual Report. And C4, Physical Facilities Housekeeping Report. Public Comment? Hearing None. Motion? Moved by Mr. Pradie, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. Board Discussion? Hearing None. Please vote. There you go. Ms. Gwen, that motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item D1, Consider Recommendation to Revise the Qualification Section Only of Job Description A-204.1, Supervisor of Instruction and School Management, Special Education, and Take Appropriate Action. Mr. Dooley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The revisions to the job description are as presented in blue on the page, the first page of the D1. It's to meet the same qualifications as Bulletin 746, which is our standards for certification. And we just changed a few things to allow us to have more applicants able to apply that have experience that we feel would be valuable to the position. So it's as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Dooley. Public Comment? Hearing None. Motion moved by Mr. Duga, seconded by Mr. Segura. Questions for Mr. Dooley. Reverend Alexander.
Those who applied, they was not certified. Come, you wonder why we keep reducing our qualification? What is the purpose?
We're not reducing the qualifications. We were changing the qualifications to include more applicants. The way the old job description read, it only allowed certain people with special ed certification only and not necessarily experience in, in other administrative roles. So that was why we added it, because of the experience.
So how was state law reads?
It says to meet the qualifications for ed leadership in, in the, in the Bulletin 746.
Okay.
Our qualifications rev were more stringent than the, the state required. We, we were requiring a special ed certification for that position when really the state only requires educational leadership.
Leadership, okay.
And we've opened that position in the past, and the pool of applicants that we got was not very great. So we're hoping that with this change, we could attract some additional applicants this time because we do have a vacancy.
So we had more requirement than we needed?
Yes.
Okay.
Good draft.
Yeah, I'm good.
Any other questions for Mr. Dooley? Hearing None. Ms. Gwen, please vote. Ms. Gwen, that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Dooley. Agenda Item D2, Consider the Adoption of Policies That Require Revision Based on the Recent Legislation and Take Appropriate Action. Mr. Landry.
Okay. If you look at your outline that I prepared for you, you'll see there's only three acts so far that require policy changes from the 2025 legislation. We haven't received most of those yet from Forethought. There were, there were two acts from 2024, which it was called Act 686 of 2024, which deleted, done away with 35 statutes. So that created somewhat of a problem. Most of that was required training. The legislature for the last five or six years has been adding more training for teachers to have to go through every year. Well, I guess the, the BESI department and maybe the teachers' unions finally rebelled enough to say enough is enough. When are we supposed to teach? So the legislature in response with Act 686 of 2024, not the last session, the one before, eliminated most of those requirements. BESI toward the end of 2024 finally mailed out to all the school jurisdictions a schedule that shows which trainings are supposed to be done, which are mandatory, and which ones are supposed to be done, how many times per year. Most of it was reduced to one time. It's, it's an involved list that each school board superintendent received. And Ms. Neely went through most of the, uh, policy manual to see how many policies we'd have to eliminate. But Forethought did that for us. And basically, the only thing that we, that we decided, Ms. Moore suggested, that on the one policy you have tonight, which I think maybe you, you may have gotten this by now, it's some language in blue, it's policy JCDAF, we're gonna add under training one sentence which says pursuant to revised Statute 17, colon, 6, Section 15. Section 14 did away with all the statutes. Section 15, we're gonna add language in the suggested revision of this policy to say the school board shall comply with all necessary training of teachers and other employees as from time to time required by BESI. I think that needs to be done. That way, if we get sued, which we always getting sued for bullying, I have four cases, active cases, we're gonna win them all, but they're fights between students. And the whole thing, it says that we didn't train teachers enough to spot bullying. Well, I don't know how you spot bullying when the teachers, when the students are emailing each other at home, not at school, saying, I'm gonna whip your butt when I get to school tomorrow morning. We don't even know that. But every, every, we have four lawsuits right now with fights, and every allegation is failure to train because we didn't recognize the bullying. Two of those lawsuits is the bully that got his butt whipped. So that's how ridiculous it's become. So, uh, I was glad to see all of these statutes eliminated, to be honest with you, because it was a ridiculous burden upon the school districts. And the other, the only other statute, and that's from 2024 too, is these mental evaluations. And again, for some reason, the school boards are considered the dumping grounds for everything the state doesn't have. So they've closed all the clinics. So now they want mental assessments to be done with inside the schools. But we're dealing with that. Other than that, that's, that's all the policies we have so far. There's probably gonna be another large stack coming to you, but it won't be as many as in '24. They pretty much left the school boards alone in the '25 session. So unless you have any questions about any particular one.
Okay.
That's all the statutes that we're amending tonight.
Okay. Thank you. You finished, Mr. Landry?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Public Comment? Hearing None. Motion? Moved by Mr. Duga, seconded by Ms. Savoie. Board Questions for Ms. Landry. Mr. McDonnell.
I had spoke to you earlier about the, uh...
I'm sorry, I forgot to go over that one.
Well, no. I don't know why they ever combine guns with drugs. It's two totally different things. If they bring a gun to school, they mean to harm somebody. If they bring drugs, you know, that's recreational or sales or whatever. And to lessen the punishment for drugs, I have no problem with. But I do have problems with any type of reduction for guns that are brought to school. First and foremost, we're supposed to give a conducive environment for education, safe. And if we allow these kids that want to bring guns back in school, they're not gonna change. They're gonna bring guns even, even if we have metal detectors. And I, I just can't support it.
The intent of the legislation, and I plead guilty, Ms. Moore, I plead guilty for her too, but something had to be done. The legislature, the way they drafted the law, was the one that was expelling the kids. The legislature said, drones are weapons, you shall be expelled for four consecutive semesters. Well, that's two years of school. And so several years ago, I was able to get an amendment, me with some other lawyers, to leave it to discretion to the superintendent to allow a expelled student to come back within the school or under some kind of plan of probation. So the only thing that was intended by this legislation was to eliminate, and that's the only thing it did, was to eliminate the mandatory expulsion by the legislature and leave that to the local school districts. So what you're saying can certainly be done by, you know, direction of this board to the superintendent, but I think it needs to be where it is. It's a case-by-case analysis. Most of the gun cases that I'm aware of were actually young, very young children who had it in a book sack for whatever reason. Most of them, they weren't loaded. Some weren't even functional. But I don't know, I don't know what the number is. I don't know what the comparison is. Maybe Ms. Neely or Mr. Heath can address that, what, you know, what our expulsions were, guns as opposed to drugs. Maybe I'm, the only ones I dealt with most of the time were, was, you know, the superintendent looking over his plan, asking me, what do you think? And most of the time, you know, to me, the educators are in the best position. They know the case-by-case basis on each student. They know what they're dealing with. And, you know, that's, right now, the legislature requires us, if a kid is arrested and he's put in jail, we gotta go educate him. I don't know how much is being done, but that's what's imposed upon you right now. He could be in jail for first-degree murder.
It gets a real education.
Until he's, until he's convicted, we have to continue to provide that education. I don't think board members will really specifically know that. That's a requirement of every board in the state.
Bob Smith told me that when I first started on the board.
So I hear you. I certainly hear you, but I think it's an issue. I'm glad this statute was passed. That's all I can tell you. There were a lot of, like you say, drug cases where... And the thing that I objected to about these statutes was that the legislature mandated that expulsion. But what the hell do they know about running the school system out of? That's the issue I had.
Well, it shows...
With that statute for years.
It shows because they put the statutes together, marijuana and guns. I mean, that, that shouldn't even be together. That should be two separate statutes.
Yeah. I understand, you know, what your reservation is.
Okay, well, I just hope it doesn't come back to bite us where we let somebody back in.
Well, it, it doesn't have to.
Yeah.
Get with the superintendent and see basically what their plan is or...
Mr. Landry, can we allow Mr. Huland to?
Sure.
Read in one section. So, Mr. McDonnell, just to make sure we're clear, your question is on the expulsion, shorten the gun instance from four ye, from four?
To two.
Semesters to two. That's, that's your issue? Okay, so let him read this and let's see.
Mr. McDonnell, let me just clarify just a little bit because it's saying, the language is now saying that the legislative established minimum was four, and then legislative established minimum is now moving to two. But again, that's a legislative established minimum, so that, that's not the maximum. So the minimum is two, but the school system can decide to, to suspend or expel for more than two. And then the next sentence is where Mr. Landry says that it gives the superintendent the authority to modify the length of the minimum required on a case-by-case basis, provided the modification is in writing. So I think that sentence allows us to do what you're asking. And the, the change from four to two is just a reflection of what the legislative requirement now is.
And actually, that was a compromise. The legislature is still mandated by the legislature, which to me should not be.
Right.
The board used to have to expel a student, drugs. You on the board then, I think, back in the mid-subdits.
We had hearings.
Board had to do it. Legislature did that on their own early eighties, I think.
We had many hearings where it all seemed, yeah, well, I got it from my dad.
The parent and the child would come here before, special meetings at the board.
At late night.
And the board would make their decision on the length of the expulsion based on the evidence that was presented to them.
Okay, that's it.
Are you, you good with that, Mr. McDonnell? You want to look at trying to do something else or?
I'd like to talk to the superintendent.
Okay. I didn't know if it was possible to just not pass this policy, to let him get his questions answered, and we can bring that one back at a different meeting.
I'm okay with him having discretion.
The authority?
Whether it's two or four years or more.
Okay.
My big beef is the fact that that should be combined.
In the same level?
Drugs and guns. Go to the grid right there.
Okay.
It wants different standards for weapons and for...
Yep, that's why I asked if he wanted to. We wanted to pull that policy out, that way, if we want to separate it or create our own, we could do it and not, we could always pass it and make an amendment to it as well.
The policy's not gonna change because the policy's simply reflecting what the legislature did.
Right, but, but we could add to the policy.
It's your internal protocols that, that's what he's gonna discuss.
So, so what we could do is we could pass it tonight, and then we could discuss it, and if you want to make an amendment to it, we could bring it back to the board and, yes. And just to let you know, Ms. Suzette agrees with you. She's on Zoom, she, for some reason, can't. She, she does have one question, and I'm not sure if she talked to you about it or not, but it's about G, the JBD, Student Pupil Progression, that addresses a more solid timeframe for making up work for students who are absent under normal events, not just a timely matter as dictated by legislation.
Right, and that's the... Where's the, which one is the attendance?
That was G.
Yeah. So her question was about the, the one involving attendance, and ask her she has the page number?
Uh, let me see.
What policy we talking about?
The last one is G, uh, G is...
Student absences and excuses?
Correct. Let me see if she has the, Ms. Sharpen, can you let us know the page number? I know you could hear me, I don't know if you could. Page two.
Yeah, her question was, in the language that says a student who is absent, including a suspended student, shall be allowed to submit missed assignments and tests, and shall be eligible to receive the same academic credit and grades originally available when work is completed satisfactorily and in a timely manner. And her question was if we could be more specific than in a timely manner. And my response was that I think that in our policy, we don't want to box ourselves into a specific number of days, but instead keep it general, because I think it depends upon the nature of the absence. If a child is absent for three days because they have the flu, they might only need three or four days to make up the work when they come back. But if the child is absent for 10 days because they had a surgery, well, then we definitely want to allow more time for that child to make up the work. So the language in a timely manner kind of leaves it to the discretion of the, the administrator at the school, dependent upon the situation for the nature of the absence. So, uh, her question was why couldn't we, you know, put in a, a certain number of days? And, and I think that we, we definitely want to leave it generic in the policy, and then each school could have their own... could have their own procedure or rule of thumb that they use. And that rule of thumb would include a provision that it's dependent upon the nature and the amount of time that the child missed, as to how much time they're going to need to make it up. So that may vary based upon the circumstance.
This was not a substantive change in law. This was the legislature telling Bessie to add a category called "Students That Were Suspended or Expelled," because Bessie only recognized two absences, excused and unexcused. So all the legislature did was tell Bessie to amend 741 to add if the student has a third category, suspension or expulsion. It's still up to the discretion of the local school boards and their policies as to how much time zone, how much time to give a student to make up missed work. So you have to look at all the factors. I mean, if the student's in a hospital with two broken legs, then you have to work with that and let him make up his work as time will allow. But if the student goes, doesn't do anything all year long, then decides to go to summer school, and he doesn't do well there, and then he said he wants to make up the work, and the school board has to make a decision, well, no. Enough's enough. You fail. That's it. So I don't know, you know, what the intricate details of what our school system uses to determine, but those matters are left to the discretion of the local school board. They have to make those choices, and their internal policies do that.
I think we should maybe come up with something as a guideline. I don't think we should maybe let the schools dictate on what they want to do, and the only reason I'm saying that is because one school is going to do one thing, another school is going to do something else, and then the parents are going to call, "Well, that school let them do this. Why can't my kid do that?" Y'all know how the parents are. So is that something that we could do as well? Ms. Suzette, I know you could hear me. Can we pass this tonight and bring an amendment, you know, put some guidelines in the policy? Is that... How hard would that be to do?
That wouldn't be hard. I just, we just normally don't get so specific in our policy manual. We leave those specifics in the procedures that schools follow, and that's the type of stuff that a school would have in their student handbook. We don't normally, you know, the policy should be overarching, and it should, you know, encompass different circumstances and not tie you in to one, either it is or it isn't, you know, because when we're dealing with kids, there's always, you know, an individual story, and we have to be able to be flexible, because if we put it in policy that we're going to give five days, and if somebody wants to want six, then the policy says only five.
I agree with what you're saying. I just, it's to have it, schools, different time zones, different timeframes, I should say, is...
And I propose that, I think what we could do is, we could ask for a review of all of our school handbooks to see what the timeframes are and how they vary from school to school, and bring that to our PrAC committee, our principals advisory committee, to see if we could have a consistent agreement on what they use there, within a range. Maybe we could develop that.
I would, yeah.
But that would, I think that should remain in the school handbook and not in the policy manual.
I'm good with that.
Ms. Sharpenche?
Ms. Suzette, I don't know if you could hear me. Are you okay with that? She's saying yes.
Okay. I will arrange that to be at one of our upcoming PrAC meetings.
Okay. Any other questions on the policies? Hearing none. So we have a motion by Mr. Dugat, and it was seconded by Ms. Savoie. No further discussion. Ms. Quinn, please vote. Ms. Quinn, that motion passes. Moving on to agenda item D3, consider recommendation regarding payments, partial or substantial, completion of stronger connection projects, and take appropriate action. Mr. Allen?
Yes. Good evening, board members and administration. So, Harry presented last meeting the substantial completion form along with a punch list for each of these two projects, and we're talking about the Stronger Connection federally-funded projects. One is the new video door communications stations for the schools. It's a total of 26 schools. And the other is the security fencing at Delcum High School and Laurel High School. So, tonight is actually the request for payment from the architect as well as the contractors. You probably have a letter from Mr. Cinnamon. Mr. Huland approved. So the architectural request for payment is $6,958.10. The, for the Stronger Connection New Video Door Communications, the total contract sum was $348,000. This payment request represents 90% of that value, which means they've reached substantial completion. And so they're, right now, we're in a lean period. So, we have a punch list. They are actively taking care of items within the punch list. So, within 45 days, if all the items are completed, and we get a lean free certificate, then the final payment can be made. So, this just represents a payment to be brought up with the paperwork for that particular project, reaching 90%, which is $287,849.62. Okay? The second project is the stronger security fencing. Most of the dollars were spent at Laurel High School, but the total contract sum was And, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm going to jump to the contractor and go back to the architect, but, and then the 90% of that $83,582 is $75,224. So that represents 90% of payment. We're withholding 10. For the architect, it's $4,200. So, they are actively taking care of the punch list items. We do get updates on that. And I sat with Harry to talk about this before he left, and Johnny is on the same page, and so is David McCollum. So we recommend payment of these requests.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Public comment? Hearing none. I got a motion by Mr. Dugat and a second by Mr. LeBlanc. Questions for Mr. Allen? Hearing none. Ms. Quinn, please vote. Ms. Quinn, that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you. Nice evening.
Before we go into the executive session, Mr. Huland, you want announcements?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank a couple groups of people that have been working extra hard, and that's our payroll and HR department. As you know, a couple meetings ago, we approved the new salary schedules. Those go into effect, and the first payroll for that for nine and 10-month employees will be at the end of this month. So all of that data is uploaded into our payroll system, but then these people have had to go and check each one of our 1,600 employees individually to make sure that their check is correct, because we didn't want any, there to be a glitch anywhere and somebody not get the deposit that they are expecting. So, so they have been locked in a room, and they have combed through each individual employee to ensure that their check is correct. So, thank you. And I don't know, they're not done yet, but almost.
Almost.
Okay.
You better bring a word. It won't mean anything. You know that, don't you?
Yeah. We still have a few days left before that payroll runs at the end of next week, right, Lauren? Yeah. Right now, we're conducting, in case you're maybe trying to get in touch with us during the day, Ms. O'Donnell, Ms. Moore, and I, along with other district staff, are conducting beginning-of-the-year meetings at each of our high schools, each of our schools, and part of the new evaluation system, and we're having individual data meetings with every principal, reviewing their goals for their school and their data, and talking about their leadership team. And so those have been very productive. It's a good opportunity for us to be on the campuses and to meet with the principals and the staff to talk about individual goals for their schools. So those are going to continue through next week as well, and then we should be wrapping those up, and we'll have met with all 23 sites. Next Thursday and Friday will be the jamboree. Thursday night in Delcum for the small schools, and then Friday night at Westgate for Nish and Westgate. So those schedules, I put in the newsletter for you guys. As you know, we've made some big changes to our transportation routes for this year. It's the first time in probably over 10 years. I've been keeping you up to date, and things are finally settling down, and we're getting in the groove of things. So Dr. White is away this evening. He couldn't be here, but I think Ms. Moore has an update from him that she'd like to share.
Yeah. So doctors said, you know, thanks for everybody's patience. I know we've gotten some phone calls, and last board meeting, a bunch of us were working on troubleshooting that. It was all hands on deck, returning phone calls. We left the front phone being answered till 7 o'clock at night to make sure that parents knew we were committed to making sure things went as smoothly as possible. Change is not easy. And so, you know, Dr. White said, we've slowly, today's the 10th day of school, and so bus drivers are getting more comfortable with their routes and the timing, because some of them have been driving the same route for a very long time. So this is a, this is a change for them. You know, schools have been very helpful. Our principals have done an amazing job of helping coordinate things and communicate with parents. So Dr. White just extended his thank you for everyone being a part of, you know, making sure things could run smoothly. But, you know, even with our IPCC routes, you know, everything is being done in the interest of efficiency and making sure we're maximizing the use of our buses. And so he's, you know, that's his commitment. And so, like I said, it's changed, and so it hasn't been easy for some people. Once again, some students have ridden the same bus throughout elementary school, and now they have a different bus driver. So, you know, like I said, those changes have been a little difficult, but it's running smoother. You know, parents that call with questions, we're still addressing. And, you know, once again, you know, my department works very closely with Doc and Ms. Enegra and Ms. Wendy. You know, I wish Ms. Enegra and Ms. Wendy were here to publicly thank them, because the thing, you know, last year, when we were without a transportation person, I know what those ladies are capable of. They are absolutely amazing. So, you know, they do a phenomenal job in that department as well.
Any other announcements? Mr. Maye?
One question.
One second, Mr. Maye. You finished, Mr. Maye? Yeah? Mr. Maye?
One question about the bus routes. The purpose of all this upheaval, I assume, was to have fewer buses or less time in the bus? But what was the result of this major change to the, our bus route system?
So, we had lots of buses that were nowhere near capacity. And so, once again, just when we're talking about efficiency and the number of buses that, you know, we have in our fleet, you know, when you only have six children riding a bus, that's for a route morning and afternoon, that's not very efficient. So those were the things that Dr. White was looking at in making sure that our use of our buses was way more efficient, you know, than having single-digit students riding a bus. So that was the number-one driving force in looking at the routes.
And the routes, the routes should be revised periodically, because student populations shift and, you know, neighborhoods change. And for this, for many years, the routes were just the routes that they were, and we ran them every year. And then we might, we had gotten to a place where, you know, down one street in the morning, you may see three different buses passing. You know, when we could run one bus and have that bus at capacity and pick up the same number of kids, you know, and so a lot of changes for the better, not only to become more efficient, but to be more economical in the number of buses that we need to have on the road.
And I was, it also eliminates, we were doing a lot of split routes and having a lot of subs, so when you reduce the number of buses, you reduce the number of times that if a bus driver doesn't show up and we have to split a route because, you know, for those purposes. So that'll also help with those kind of situations as well.
So we are using fewer buses and better balancing the number of students per bus?
Correct.
I think it's 13 buses that we're not using this year?
Yeah. We're going to wait another week or so to make sure the numbers balance, and right now, we're checking, because, you know, everybody who said in the first day of school that they were going to ride the bus may not actually be riding. So we normally collect the numbers. We get head counts from the bus drivers for the first couple weeks of school, and then we'll make our final tweaks based on actual ridership. And then it's estimated that we'll probably be able to return approximately 12 buses to the leasing agency, because we will have consolidated our fleet. And that savings, we have plans, if you remember at our retreat, we talked about some of the ideas that we have for the transportation department with the GPS tracking for parents and different things. So with that savings from reduced number of buses that have to be leased, we'll be able to move some of that money towards some new technology that will make our transportation system more robust.
Good, Mr. Maye? Mr. Pradhy?
Yes. Mr. Huland, and I tried to call Dr. White. He's been out. Okay? I know that. He's been busy. What is the distance from the pickup point to the farthest point that a student should walk to meet his bus? Do you have any idea?
So it is, it depends by age. So there's a range for like elementary and a range for middle school. I don't remember it off the top of my, if you'd asked me that last year, I'd have known it, because I was handling a lot more of those phone calls at that time. But it is, I can look it up. It is in our transportation manual that's provided to the bus drivers, but, and that's, and, you know, and we can go and find where in the statute, you know, or the bulletin for transportation.
Right.
It says what that is, but, and we do follow that.
Right. Because, now, it wasn't a parent that called, it was a student that called me. And actually, I went down there and I saw for myself, these students walked from the drop-off point over a mile to their house. "Yes, sir, and I could bring you to the route, and I'll show it to you."
Yeah. If you give it to, we're investigated for sure.
Yeah. Right. Because I said, "There's no way y'all supposed to be walking this far." And I went and I met, I saw where they got off the bus at, and I saw where the last student house is. And it's almost exactly a mile.
Yeah. There is a maximum distance. I don't want to guess off the top of my head and say the wrong thing, but it is in the statute that we follow for transportation.
But I saw that with my own two eyes. Nobody, they called me, and I went down there.
If you give me, give me the name and number.
And that was Monday afternoon. I went down, and that's why I wanted to call Dr. White, but he's been out.
I'll have Dr. White go out there tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay. We'll talk.
Very good.
Good, Mr. Pradhy.
Oh, yeah. I'm fine.
Any other questions? Need a motion to go into executive session. Move by Ms. Toob, second by Mr. Pradhy. Please, watch us slip. Please vote. Ms. Quinn, that motion passes. Executive session starts at 6:18. We muted.